Teresa, please let Bill know that we're late.
He's working recently.
Good evening and welcome to the Lawrence City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, November 21st, 2017. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Reyes.
Present.
Counselor De Peña.
Present.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Present.
Counselor Abdu.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz.
Present.
Counselor Maldonado. Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez. Counsel Vice President LaPlante. And Counsel President Vasquez.
Present. Please note that Counselors Maldonado and Neokha Alvarez Rodriguez excuse themselves before the meeting. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Now please join me for the Pledge of Legions. Thank you. Counselors, we have a few set of minutes, three sets of minutes that needs to be approved. Minutes from August 15th, 2017, September 5th, 2017, and September 19th, 2017. Can I please get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Public participation, please remember that you will have two and a half minutes to speak. Once you hear the first bell, that means that you've spoken for two minutes. By the time you hear the second bell, that means that you've spoken for two and a half minutes and your time is up. Please address the city council as a whole, not individual counselors. First person is Mr. H. Malley.
Good evening, honorable members. In this wonderful season of the tank and gracious thanksgiving, we the citizens are grateful for our best police department. We are grateful to Lawrence Police Department and their awesome union. We are grateful for Honorable Chief Fitzpatrick, for his awesome leadership. We demand of Mayor Rivera and this council to sign our police officers contract. We are grateful for our hardworking DPW. Lawrence is a better city because of our hardworking DPW worker. We must support our DPW and their union. The only union in our city that has contract are wonderful teachers' union. Million thanks to great leadership of Honorable Rally and hard work of the Frank McLaffey. Our teachers are only union in our city that they have a contract. News of departure of the superintendent of Rally makes us sad, but he been loved forever for our citizen, for our children. A new generation are grateful to such an awesome leadership for Lawrence Public School. Our city had election, 7,600 vote for beloved Honorable William Lantigua, who is loved and respected forever. We are grateful for his fight for Lawrence. We need to have a prosper Lawrence and safe Lawrence. In order to have that, need to support our police officers and the union and the senior officers' union. We need to move forward by supporting our wonderful firefighters and their union. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malley. Next person is Dick Russell.
Good evening, counselors. Lots transpired since our last get-together. I guess the voters decide they'd rather see me on this side of the podium for the next two years. I was gonna thank some unknown people for their nice actions in the recent campaign, but that can wait. I was gonna complain to the council about the volatile situation that surrounds the downtown clubs at closing time, but I found out you guys have no control over the battle zone that houses the clubs. That falls under the authority of the licensing board, which can, amongst other things, set closing times. So I guess the only thing left to talk about is Attorney General Sessions' threat to withhold or even clawback grant money from the city because of an act of political stupidity known as the Lawrence Trust Act, AKA Sanctuary City Ordinance. You say tomato, I say tomato, same difference. Now here in my hand is a rather interesting document. Chapter 58, the Acts of 2010, an act providing for the financial stability of the city of Lawrence. It, in it, it details the duties and rights of the overseer. Section 4, 1, recommend to the mayor, the city council, sound fiscal policy. 2, supervise all financial services and activities. 4, provide assistance in all matters relating to municipal finance affairs. 5, assist in development and preparation of all department budgets and spending. Do any of these clauses give him the authority to force the overturning of the Trust Act? AG Sessions has alluded to us about $140,000 in police grant money that could be possibly clawed back. If that money goes, what money is next? You all know me well enough to know that I take no personal enjoyment in saying this, but I told you so, that this day may come. That light you see in the end of the tunnel isn't the gravy train. It's on the money train, and they want their money back. As an addendum to this, I see where some federal judge placed a permanent injunction on the enforcement of AG Sessions' game plan. So my suggestion is revoke the Lawrence Trust Act and hope people will comply with all federal laws and regulations. As always, I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. I am now submitting these names to the record. Counselors, before I move on to the public hearings, I just want to congratulate each and every one of you for being reelected and thank you Counselor Ortiz for the service you've provided to the city council, as well as Counsel Maldonado and Neokha Alvarez Rodriguez, who unfortunately weren't able to make it tonight. We also have in the audience elected Counselor Maria de la Cruz from District A, who has joined us in the audience. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, moving on, we have public hearings. Document 241A and B17 is a loading zone, Mill Street. Joel Herrera, Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 241A, 41B. Notice is hereby given, the city council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 21st, 2017 in council chambers at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment to the revised ordinance of city Lawrence to be amended by deleting the following paragraph from a parking provision of the municipal code concerning Mill Street West Side from Essex Street to Canal Street, this being part of 241A. And further, to be amended by adding the following sub-paragraph of the municipal code concerning service zones or loading zones to be inserted in proper order to locate the loading zone at Mill Street West Side from 1.20 feet northerly of the intersection of Canal Street to 1.40 feet of northerly, excuse me, 40 feet northerly of the intersection of Canal Street, 20 feet to 40 feet, that being part 241B. To the extent there exist any ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed in that respect. Only persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published on November 8th.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made and properly second. Discussion, Counselor LaPlante.
I just wanna make sure I'm clear on this. Is it looking for a loading dock or there's no parking on one side of the street?
That's for the loading zone.
It's a loading zone.
It's a loading zone.
So it's just for a loading zone?
Yes.
That there is no parking in a certain area for things to be offered?
That's another document. There should be another document. The one that we are proving tonight is loading zone. It's just a loading zone in front of the business for them loading the truck whenever they have some merchandise that they need to.
And so I'm seeing, so it's a really bizarre Lawrence Police Department approval. It doesn't say it supports it, it just reiterates what the request is and then what's currently there. Doesn't make any sense. What was your, at the ordinance committee, through you, Mr. President, what was the comment from the police department? Do you recall?
Okay, we send, first this document was separate than the other one was 241E, which is a loading zone. The other part is parking only one side of Canal Street. That's the one that I called Mr. Maloney to clarify because we have been sent it with recommendation to order a public hearing. So he has more information to update us where the documents are.
Okay, so this has been split, A and B. B is loading dock, A is parking. The only reason I'm, this is actually at the very fringe of my district. I'm just curious as to, I mean, I'm reading the police memo and it just says that it's a request for a loading zone and both sides of Mill Street between Methuen Street and Canal Street are posted for no parking. Is the police department in favor of this? They are not in favor of this?
Not on that one. Not on the parking. And the loading zone, yeah, was okay.
Oh, they're okay with the loading zone? Okay. That's all we're dealing with right now?
Yeah, that's all, that's all we're dealing with, the loading zone.
Yeah, the parking, they...
No.
Okay, so just a loading zone.
It's the loading zone.
That's what I need, no, thank you. I'm all set.
Any further questions? Counselor Rodriguez?
I just wanted to just put my input about the loading zone. This is completely different item than the parking.
That's what I was just told? That's what I was just telling him.
Counselor Ortiz?
So it says here though in the public hearing, the document 241A and 241B, but we're voting on 241...
A.
Specifically for the loading zone, 'cause there's no parking both sides. I can see where, I know where.
That's a different item.
Right, but there's no, but it's the same space.
No, no parking. That's, just a loading zone in front of the business.
Right, but that's the same street?
No.
No, that is Mill Street. Parking is on Canal Street.
Now, so I'd like to make a clarification. There's two documents.
Yes.
But both documents are not here today.
Right, 'cause I only see loading zone.
So what's happening is that 241A is for the removal of no parking in that section because currently there's no parking allowed. So in order to add a parking zone, or a loading zone, we will need to allow parking first. So we're saying we are allowing parking specifically in the front of the building only for loading and unloading purposes, not for patrons. So if you are a customer, you are not allowed to park there.
Right.
So what, so that's why the document is broken into two. One is to remove the provision that says no parking allowed.
Okay, and then make it a loading zone instead?
Yes.
So that way the business there can...
Yeah.
Be able to come in and out and not get in trouble?
That's correct.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? All those in favor please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, moving on. Is Mr. Vargas in the room?
Not yet.
Not yet. So Counselor Ortiz, how about if we do this? We're gonna take your document first. Document 38117 is a resolution for John Miller, placed on the agenda by Counselor Ortiz. I believe, Teresa, do you have the resolution?
It's right here.
Brian has.
I'll take that. I trust you, Counselor Ortiz, implicitly. Thank you.
Good evening, counselors. Good evening, everyone that's here this evening. I have before you John Miller. I had the distinguished pleasure, along with Counselor Rodriguez, to meet him a while back at Open Studios Night. And he has really made an impression on not only the city, but specifically to the children of Lawrence. He lent his time this summer at the Lawrence Public Library. And thank you so much, Jessica, for being able to make it and being here, and she's here to support him. So I would like to read this resolution and present this to you this evening. Be it known that we, the members of the City Council of Lawrence, Massachusetts, by and through this resolution, hereby applaud and recognize the achievement and accomplishment of John Miller for his creation of Adventures in Handum, a sci-fi themed children's book with a positive message where good defeats evil through the efforts of family and community, as told through the insights of an autistic young man as its central character. Whereas, John is a senior enrolled as a graphic student at the Greater Lawrence Vocational Technical High School in Andover, Massachusetts, who with the help of his family draws upon his personal struggles with autism to use his creative skills to write and publish his first illustrated children's book in December of 2016, entitled Adventures in Handum. Whereas, since being diagnosed with autism at age five, John has worked hard to overcome social and personal challenges, with accomplishments at the age of eight, competing in the Special Olympics, winning two gold medals in track and field, and winning several gold and silver medals in gymnastics. With even greater resolve, John has earned a black belt in Taekwondo, all achievements chronicled by local television and newspapers. Whereas, John's determination served to demonstrate his athletic ability, which is further enhanced by his creative ability and talent by writing and drawing, which take shape in the form of literature with the cast of characters presented in the episodes of his book Adventures in Handum. Adventure, whereas Adventures in Handum is a work of science fiction, but is also a real-life reflection of social and personal accomplishments, told in a wildly colorful and imaginative way by a young man who against all odds reminds kids and adults alike that good still triumphs over evil. And hard work, positive thinking, and family support improves who we are individually and as a community and our personal experience. Wherefore, we, the members of the Lawrence City Council, hereby applaud and honor the personal creative achievement of John Miller and hereby set on our hand the cause, the seal of the city of Lawrence, to be affixed this 21st day of November, 2017. I give you John Miller.
Thank you, city of Lawrence. This is truly an honor of being here tonight and sharing this moment with everyone, my family. This, I've come a long way and I just can't believe this is happening to me right now. I mean...
Welcome on, right, John?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Keep up doing the wonderful things you're doing today, John, okay? We hope to see you back here soon. We're gonna go back to the top of the agenda. Is Mr. Vargas here?
I saw him walk in to the room, just...
Okay, so let's refer a couple of documents to the subcommittees. Document 38017 is an appropriation transfer for more staffing temp health nurse on the amount of $6,616.80. It's going down to Budget and Finance Committee. Document 38317, fiscal years unpaid bill, Office of the City Attorney. The amount of $2,069.25 and $918.20 is going to Budget and Finance Committee. Document 38417. Document 38417 is an appropriation transfer. Office of the City Attorney from free cash to litigation on the amount of $750,000 is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Clerk, for this particular document, I believe that there will possibly be executive session anticipated. If we could add it to the title of the document as well. Thank you, I appreciate that. Document 38517, appropriation transfer, Office of the City Attorney from free cash to the City Attorney's others purchase service agreement, uh, service account on the amount of $50,000. There's a request to approve it as an emergency. Is the City Attorney in the room tonight? Now, we have Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Corrigan. Counselors first. For purposes of allowing the discussion, can I please get a motion to approve the suspend the rules and approve the emergency measure?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Good evening.
Good evening, counselors. So forgive me, I had to run out and help somebody with another emergency matter, oddly enough. So I assume that you had an opportunity to read the memorandum. By way of some background, as most of you, maybe all of you know, there was a significant fire on Bennington Street earlier this summer. Two homes were completely destroyed and subsequently demolished. There is a very large rubble pile spread across two lots consisting of 137-139 Bennington Street and 131-133 Bennington Street. Two separately owned, privately owned lots. The lot in question, or the lot that the city is particularly involved in is the 137-139 Bennington Street lot. This is a lot that's owned by a gentleman by the name of Antonio Donis. Mr. Donis is nowhere to be found. To the best of my knowledge, he did not have property insurance and furthermore, he owed the city a significant amount of money in back taxes. So he is, he has abandoned the property and has left it in its current condition, which is, as all of you know, an unsafe condition. Compounding the problem is the fact that the rubble from the two destroyed dwellings was mixed together. So the adjacent lot owned by the Louis family, which has property insurance and full coverage for the damage, they're unable to proceed with the cleanup without the cooperation of the adjacent property owner. Because Mr. Donis AWOL, the city has basically taken over the property. We have a, actually have a taking filed against the property, so we have a lien for unpaid taxes and we have essentially taken control of the property for purposes of cleaning it up and abating this very significant safety concern. So when I first became aware of this issue sometime in August, I contacted the Department of Environmental Protection. DEP has inspected the property and although they have not found direct evidence of asbestos-containing material, they have not been able to rule out the presence of asbestos-containing material because of the nature of the destroyed pile of rubble. Therefore, per DEP regulations, we have to take out the entire rubble pile as if it were all asbestos-containing material, which obviously complicates the matter. What we have done is we've consulted with a, and hired a consultant who specializes in asbestos remediation. We have published an invitation for bids for a contractor to remove the rubble pile. We have obtained four bids. The winning bid being submitted by a company called NASDI LLC of Woburn. I will circulate for the council a copy of the... That's an actual copy of the list of bidders. The winning bid in this case was from NASDI, as I mentioned, with a bid price of $80,327. As mentioned earlier, the city is working with the adjacent property owner who has full insurance for the cleanup. So the city is responsible, or we have taken responsibility for 50% of all the cleanup work. So of the $80,327, the city will be on the hook for half of that. Now you may reasonably ask, why is the city doing this? Well, we have no choice. We've tried to track down Mr. Donis, the property owner, to no avail. If the city does not get involved in this case, the pile is gonna sit there. DEP will not allow the property to be abated and the pile cannot be removed until somebody takes control of it. So, so the city is involved. We are prepared to file an application with DEP for a permit to remove the rubble. We're working with a consultant. We're working with the adjacent property owner. If we can get the council's approval tonight, we will hopefully be filing tomorrow with DEP. We will hopefully be contracting with NASDI very, very soon. And ideally, all of the rubble at this site will be removed by the end of this year, which is our goal, before the weather sets in and it makes the remediation impractical. So forgive me for that long-winded background, but if there are any questions from the council, I'd be happy to try to answer those. It's a complicated case, but one that we've had to take on unfortunately and take on responsibility for someone who otherwise should have taken it on.
Counselor Reyes?
No, Counselor Rodriguez first. I keep emitting less, 'cause I just...
Counselor Rodriguez?
Thank you, Counsel President. So why, why 50,000 and not 40,000 if the bid is 80,000 and we're responsible for 50% only?
Thank you, Teresa. So Counsel, we, so first of all, the... This project is going to require the input of different sources. The main source of service, of work, is going to be from NASDI. They're the contractor who's gonna actually come in and truck, and load the material onto trucks in a safe, DE-proved manner and truck it away to some site. I'm told that there are asbestos dumping sites in Maine and New Jersey. But that has nothing to do with the city once it gets off-site. We have, we've retained the services of a consultant, Environmental Health, Inc., which is required by law. This is the company that is going to basically oversee the project. They're helping us with the DEP application and they've been providing us with advice, assisted us with preparation of the solicitation for bids that resulted in the NASDI bid. So we have this company that we're working with. And just through consultation with our finance director and the city attorney, I was advised that we should probably try to overestimate just in case there may be some unforeseen circumstances that arise during the project. But what you see here, Counselor, is what I believe to be a firm bid, 80,327. I would expect that that's the amount that we're going to contract with NASDI LLC. And that is the amount of money that they're ultimately going to charge us and the adjacent property owner. So I'm not expecting that it's going to be, the price is gonna be any higher. There are gonna be some consulting fees. There are some permitting fees that have to be paid to the Department of Environmental Protection. Relatively small, but ideally, this cost to the city will be closer to 40,000 than 50,000. But I've asked for 50,000 just to provide some... But I've asked for fifty thousand just to provide some, some cushion. And I don't know what the mechanism would be if, once we complete the project, if let's say there's seven thousand dollars left over, do we transfer that back to free cash? I'm not really sure, but certainly if that's what the council would instruct us to do, that's what we'll do. The fifty thousand is hopefully more than we're going to need for this project.
So, once we have the site cleaned up and everything is also ready to go, what's the next step in terms of getting that forty, the fifty thousand back? Perhaps selling the property or?
Yes, so the next step after that, actually concurrent to this asbestos remediation project, is our tax lien foreclosure case. So, we're in the process of foreclosing on the tax lien. Mister Donis owes the city roughly eighty-five thousand dollars in back taxes. He hasn't paid for years. Why we haven't taken action sooner, I'm not really sure. But nonetheless, we are going to be hopefully foreclosing on that tax lien very soon. In addition to the amount owed for real estate taxes and the amount that the city is going to expend on this remediation project, which is also going to result in a lien. We would then, once we take ownership of the property through that tax lien foreclosure process, we would then probably RFP it, you know, we would put it out for, for bid. And as a buildable lot in a, in an R-three zone where a developer could put up a multifamily home, we're hoping to be, you know, we're hoping to make the city whole in this case. You know, I think it's not unreasonable to expect that we, we might get a hundred thousand dollars for the lot, but certainly, I don't want to make any guarantees. But that's certainly our hope, that we're going to be able to make the city whole in this case, once we complete the remediation, tax lien foreclosure process, and then, and then sell it to a developer.
Is the property proper secure right now?
Yeah, the property is, it's barricaded by a chain link fence. You know, it's not an ideal situation. Talked to a lot of the neighbors, there's, you know, there are pests, there are people that have been dumping. Counselor Reyes would probably attest to. It's, it's not a healthy situation. It is secured. You know, ideally, you know, kids can't get in and, and play in there. But, but nonetheless, it's a situation that is a major, major health concern to, to the neighborhood. And so, therefore, that's why we've, we've come forward with this emergency request. If the council approves this tonight, I plan to submit the application to the Department of Environmental Protection tomorrow. Ask them to expedite it, expedite our contract with NASDI and hopefully get this work started very soon.
Council President, do we have to wait the thirty days for this?
It's part of the emergency.
It is part.
Counselors, any further questions? Counselor Reyes?
Thank you, thank you. Counselor, I encourage all of you to support this item. And one of the reasons, it's not only about the cleanup that the neighbor are concerning, it's a lot of traffic. It's, you know, it's many homeless that whenever they know it's a fire, they use some kind of way to build a house. So, this is the current situation now. It's not only to removal, they wishing to see if they're going to rehab, if they're going to demolish the house, but something definitely needs to be done. This is my fifth time that I've been meeting with the neighbors and they are really concerned about that. We really need to do something. They waited until now because they was waiting, the owner of the house was going to take some actions. Since this didn't happen, this is the only resolution we have handy now. Please, I encourage you to support this and help me with this item.
Counselor Lapland?
I'll be abstaining for this because of the appearance conflict of interest with my full-time job during the day.
Yeah, yeah.
Counselor Reyes, thank you very much for the initiative on this item and as well as Attorney Corrigan. Thank you for the good work. This is very much needed and is a big concern in that part of the city. Thank you, Counselor Reyes and Attorney Corrigan. Counselors, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mister Clerk, roll call please.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Depeña?
Yes.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Yes.
Counsel Abdu?
Yes.
Counsel Ortiz?
Yes.
Counsel Maldonado noted, Counsel Alvarez Rodriguez noted, Counsel Vice President Lapland?
Abstain.
Noted. And Counsel President?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you. Document three ninety-three seventeen is an appropriation transfer, Lawrence Police Department from free cash to the department's fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget and the amount of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars is going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Counselors, let's go back to document three eighty-two seventeen, which is communications from the mayor, release of economic development promotional video placed on the agenda by Mister Abel Vargas, our Business and Development Director. Good evening, Director.
Good evening. I, I had some initial technical difficulties, but I think I got it down now, so.
Great. In the meantime, I would like to also acknowledge the presence of Counselor-elect Anna Levy. She's, she has joined us tonight in the audience.
I have the control for, for the
Right on the control panel there, there's a small button, I think it's a blue button, I believe. There we go.
So, while that starts, Abel Vargas, Business and Economic Development Director, six and Havel Street. About a year ago, the city, the city council committed some funds for us to begin having conversations more broadly with the region and the state and have a conversation about what it is to do Lawrence, do business in Lawrence and the vitality that exists. Through those efforts, I was able to fund this, this video, which will give us a good sense of what it is to be here as a business owner and the opportunities that exist. The main themes of the video is, one, there's prosperous businesses active in Lawrence. Two, we have a great workforce that businesses can depend on, both here in Lawrence and regionally. And third, that there is, there's available space that's affordable and quality that businesses that want to come set up shop here will be able to do so. So, this is a short video, it's about six minutes or so, and I wanted to make sure that all of you had an opportunity to view it. And, and yeah, so it's, so I'm going to be releasing it online as well.
Thank you, Director.
So, is that volume on this thing too?
I think you have to rewind it.
Be kind to rewind.
And put the volume up a little.
So, the volume is coming from?
No, go back to the video, Director.
Right there.
You know what you can do? Use the mic. Get the mic closer.
It's not the It's over here, it sounds coming out of here.
My name is Jonathan Oxenden, I'm the president of the Gem Group, which moved to Lawrence in nineteen ninety-six. We're in the promotional products business. We make vacations, business accessories and other items that sell for the best companies in the world. Lawrence is like a little bit of a hidden treasure. It's something that when you come here, you realize all the assets that exist in the city. You're at a highway crossroads which allows people to come in from a wide area, so you need different filters to come in this here, you can get them here. Within the Lawrence community, there's a huge pool of talented people who are ready, willing and able to work. Supported by city government and institutions who want to see business exchange in the city. And that is really a unique combination, one is the workforce, and the other is the community. We have an excellent quality. We work with a lot of people, we're trying to create a place to work, and so we're doing a lot better home. And the job, I guess, is to, okay, now I'm going to talk.
Really, really, I love this town, it's a good place to work, too, I mean, the origin, the origin, so I, 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 I would go, it's a
We do have a community, we want the community to be working with us, but we're going to do that with free licenses, you know. So, we're really excited about how Lawrence is a community that works, because whether you come from a local, from a public, or East Africa, you can work, so you can go to school and you can find your I think that the better we do that, the better construction, the better the city will do.
Over the last few years, there's been a real resurgence in the city, and I think there's been this opportunity. A lot of our tenants come here, need to be here and grow here, and that's one of the things that we love to see. We allow a lot of flexibility to please in, and we also have the largest area of contiguous space in northern Massachusetts. So, if you need two thousand per pike or if you need a hundred and twenty thousand per pike, we accommodate that. Location and access to the labor forces is so important, we have so much here, and that's huge for companies that want to relocate. We just signed this software company that's expanding, it's going to create another thirty, forty jobs, one of the mills that we're be having. Something creative, hardworking, people that want to, they said it's easily accessible and we're compromised, it's, it's their need.
I'm back on the studio, I'm a medical device company located here in Lawrence, Massachusetts. We take all the building and the waste purpose into the high-tech corporate worldwide headquarters. And we've been able to grow it over time, and it's mutually located within the region of all types of skills and talent that we need. A lot of people ask me, why are you in Lawrence? My immediate response is, why aren't you? It's just been a phenomenal place for us to go with this. We created a company that's approaching four hundred million dollars in revenue, a public company, and we did it right here in Lawrence.
So, that's, that's pretty much it. I mean, we, the notion is that Lawrence has always been a place where people work, whether it's in the old mills and the factories or in biotech or in medical device or any other industry that you saw before you on the video. So, this is a reminder to all of us internally and for folks outside, that Lawrence is a place where people work and it's a place for business. And we invite folks to come in and take a look for themselves.
Thank you very much, Director Vargas. We greatly appreciate your presentation. Counselors, are there any questions or comments? Seeing there's none, can I please get a
I got a question.
Counselor Lapland?
So, where can we, if our constituents want to see this, how can they get hold of it?
So, I have sent a citywide email to everyone that's, that's here, including all city employees, it's on Facebook, it's being shared by the mayor and other folks. She should be able to see it on, on, on social media effective immediately.
Thank you. Can I please get a motion to withdraw?
Motion to withdraw.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Counselors. Document three oh one seventeen, Madam Chair from the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Counselor President. Document three oh one seventeen is Lawrence Historical Commission requests that the North Common National Historical District be properly referred to as the Common. And to create a resolution that came out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion has been made and properly second, any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, Counselor Lapland?
I thought that the Common was the Campanione Common. Did that come up during the discussion?
Yeah, the Common. There's many people that they call like Park of the World and referring a different name, so the Historical
I'm sorry, Counselor.
Historical Commission want us to refer or create a resolution that the Common, no any other different name.
So, can't call the Campanione Common anymore, or we can't call the Campanione Common?
We still can call Campanione.
What's the point of this?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm a little, so
I know, he just want
Is he here?
They just want to be referred as the Common, no any other different name, like we call like Parque de la Zardilla and all different names that we name it.
And how does the South Common, did they have any feelings about that at all? I'm just curious.
SoCo.
The South Common?
Yes.
O'Connell Park, no? No comments on that one?
Common.
Just the Common?
Mm-hmm.
I, 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 I don't, I wish I knew more about why we're creating a resolution, but the problem, I, I, I don't know. I, if I knew the problem better and this is going to solve the problem, I just don't know, I, I just befuddled by why this is even on the agenda, but I don't, I guess know the issue well enough to understand what the, what the controversy is or what we're trying to solve, or I don't know.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Just to clarify a little bit, there were official documents that were referred with a different name. They just want them to be called the Common on official documents perhaps coming out of the city. And, and that was one of these as well.
It's basically the same. He doesn't, I mean, they don't want them to refer, I'm sorry.
Counselor Reyes?
Whenever a document is going to be presented or someone is calling North Common, they just want to hear that we use the Common part. That's all they're looking for. It's nothing big, it's not any issue. It's not that they're going to resolve or create any more problems, they just want to see this is in here.
Okay, got it.
Counsel Ortiz?
But in turn, as Counselor Plant mentioned, the Common could be North Common or South Common. It can be Campanione Common. And so, naming it the Common doesn't, or when we, if we're talking about legal documents, which now it's getting a little bit, not legal, but you know what I mean. Well, it is legal what we do. I'm like, what we do is legal when we're putting, like you said, all of the other idioms that we have for the North Common. Is, I see a plaque out there that says that the official name of that park is the Campanione Common, correct? Is that what's in writing as far as in some kind of registry or something like that? So, in turn, if we put, if we put the Common, right, as in, in consideration of signifying the Campanione Common, how does that distinguish? the Campanione Common, how does that distinguish one from another, and how does that also alleviate not calling the park its proper name, which is the Campanione Common? Do you see?
Yep.
Do you see what I'm saying? Can anybody help? Madam, so this is, this came through ordinance?
This is what?
This came through ordinance?
This came from ordinance.
All right, so do you see what I'm saying where-
I do, I do.
So then, how?
When he came in front of us, he was trying to explain why is the reason. Remember that those people, they know the history.
Correct.
And they go back years and years and years ago.
Correct.
We send it up with favorable recommendation, yes, but we still can either table here, he can come and give more explanation, because we felt the same when he came in front of us.
Because it's the Campanione Common.
Yes.
That's the name. So if in turn, this said, let's make a resolution that any documentation that comes out of this office, or referrals for the use of the Campanione Common, actually say Campanione Common, not North Common, not Parque de la Zardilla, that I could support, but in respect to just saying the Common, when we have two Commons, that doesn't distinguish North Common or South Common?
Councillor Ortiz, believe me, I'm on the same page. I feel the same, but like I say, it was something like we find out, like it was nothing big, it was no changes, it's more like for them to have something that we pass. However, we can table it here.
I would entertain a motion to table.
Yeah, and I-
The table has been made.
Second.
It's been properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No. The ayes have it.
I've already no.
Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council Vice President?
No.
Council Ortiz?
Yes.
Council Abdu?
No.
Council Rodriguez?
No.
Council Depeña?
Yes.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council President?
No.
Councillor Ortiz at the floor.
So seeing as, I would yield the floor, because I would like more information on the intent. I understand from Council Rodriguez, and that's the mindset that I'm in, and I would like for the National Historic, the Historical Society to come and explain, and maybe that we would in turn change the comment to actually Campanione Common or North Common, to fall in line with what we legally have the park named as. I would, that's my thought. I'll yield the floor.
Councillor Abdu?
Thank you, Mr. President. Speaking or communicating with a couple of members from the Historical Commission, their thrust here was that whether it was slang or improper use, more and more the city was referring to the Campanione Common as the Campanione Park, the Common Park, and I for one don't know the subtle differences between a park and a common, but I do greatly respect a few of the members that are on that Historical Commission because of the breadth of their knowledge and their time, and I, to use the expression, yield the floor, I yield to them because they've put a lot into this. So for what it's worth, the other members here, I was in that meeting, the ordinance meeting, on another matter, and had the chance to speak to one member that night, the chair, and I've subsequently heard from another two, that really it's the expression, park, whether in English or Spanish, but getting away from the dedication of the common, and from there, I would pick up where our colleague, Councillor Plant, was going, is why the language doesn't articulate why Campanione isn't in there, I do not know. I for one do not want to lose that heritage, and I'm sure that Mr. Stunza and the other members of the Commission would not intend for that to be the case. So I really didn't have a point here, but I wanted to share with you what I got from Mr. Stunza and another couple of members, that it really is keeping the word "park" in the expression, not slang, but just kind of watering down what is widely considered a gem in our city, the Campanione Common. So for what it's worth, I hope that helps, but I just want to also note that I did not vote to table this, because I did not want this conversation to stop. I could support, I could support it later, but it's, I think it was important that we kind of talked this through. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councillors, any further questions or comments? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, is there a motion on the floor, Mr. Clerk? The motion is to approve.
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Depeña?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Abdu?
Yes.
Council Ortiz?
No.
Council Maldonado noted, and Council Alvarez Rodriguez noted. Council Vice President LaPlante?
Yes.
And Council President?
Amastey, motion carries.
Aye, in favor, one against. Amastey carries.
Next document is document 340-
Mr. President, that vote carry?
Yes.
The vote carries. Thank you. Document 34017, residence ticket parking only, Front Street. Councillor Abdu. Mr. Clerk, Madam Chair from the Ordinance Committee-
Thank you, thank you, Councilor President. Document 34017 came out with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that as the formal motion.
Second the motion.
Motion has been made to order a public hearing. Is there any comment? Hearing none, motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Document number 34117, handicap parking, 89 Chester Street, deletion, public hearing, public hearing to be ordered?
Correct.
Yes.
Is there a motion to make a public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it.
Mr.?
Uh-oh.
Order, what's that?
It's okay, it's just to order a public hearing. He just called the motion. That's, that's fine.
And, Mr. President, if I could ask for a point of personal privilege?
Are you offended, Mr. Abdu?
Which I say with a question mark, because I'm not sure if it's the right motion, but I just want to state something the clerk knows, if we can just make sure that this properly states 105 Chester. He and I have spoken, I just want to get it into the records with the clerk, I mean, with our secretary, and in the record.
Motion clear?
Got it.
It is clear. Thank you, Mr. Abdu.
Thank you.
Document 342, Lawrence Historical Commission, vendors-
On the Campanione Common.
On the Campanione Common. Statement and position to create a resolution-
Thank you.
-in support of enforcing the ordinance of the vendors of the Common. Councillor Reyes?
Thank you. This item is to enforcing the ordinance, and I can explain a little bit about that. We have vendors, they park inside the park, and they just want to see-
Side of the common.
And-
On the Campanione Common.
Shame on you. Shame on you.
You would, yes?
Shame on you. And you know why. Shame on him, and he know why. I didn't want to send up that document.
You would, yes?
So I didn't have a choice.
Councillors?
Okay? So it's, it's just to enforce-
There's no motion yet on the floor, Mr. President.
And that came out with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second the motion.
So a motion has been made, and it's been properly second. Any discussion?
So, just so I'm clear-
Councillor LaPlante?
So this is going to enforce the ordinance of the vendors, and just exactly-
Document?
Just so we're all clear, because we're going to get vendors coming before us, I just want to have just, I want to have a public discussion of it, so that no one's caught off guard by it. So what exactly is the, is the resolution looking to do, so just we're clear on it?
We send information to DPW as well as the police department, just to kind of work together in enforcing that if anyone see, they can call DPW, police department, and just kind of help us to enforcing the ordinance of the vendors on common.
So are vendors going to be allowed to be on the common?
Not allowed into.
Pardon?
Not allowed into the common.
Not allowed into the common, so on the-
Like ice cream truck, they come and they know that they don't supposed to be driving inside, or parking inside the common.
So at a festival, and we have vendors-
That's something different. That is something different. But in a, you know, in a summertime, like many of you has seen, there's many trucks that we repeated in front of, you know, ordinance committee, you're not supposed to be parking inside the park, you're not supposed to be driving into it, and they usually do, so that is why they think something else needs to be done. But festival, yes. Semana hispana, yes.
Can you bring clarification? Thank you. For you, Council President, can you bring clarification to, there are present vendors there now, do they have a vendor license to be inside the park?
No, no vendor has license to be inside the park.
Throughout the year, so you know, you know where I'm talking about. Okay, so you know where we play dominoes?
Yeah.
At the corner of Haverhill and Jackson?
Uh-huh.
You know, I mean, I don't know if you play dominoes there, but I'm just saying.
No.
So, you know, so right there, we have a vendor, we have about two or three vendors.
Outside the park.
No.
Inside the park.
Inside the park.
That is why they-
Yeah, Piragua, I mean, she's pretty famous, she was on Fox 25 as a staple to Lawrence, and what we do there, there's a Piragua person, there's a Patelito person, we have vendors there. So is there a mechanism that will allow them to continue what we historically have allowed, as far as business and what is the fiber of the common, because it has a community all its own, that they're going to be continuing to do their business? What is the avenue that they have? And have they been contacted about this?
Councillor Ortiz, you brought up a very important point.
Thank you, I often do.
But what they are referring is vendor, he has like a small car, it's not even like a truck.
That's still a vendor.
Yeah, it's still a vendor, but they refer, but they refer more to a truck driving into-
Is that a, okay, so that I've seen, so I've seen cars drive right through.
Yeah.
But that is still, this doesn't distinguish that. So if we don't put language to distinguish that, then we are creating a situation.
The document that was present in front of us was just that truck driving into the park. But you, like you say, you brought up a very good one, a very good one.
So, throw your, Council President?
Councillor Rodriguez?
This is going to be a resolution that is going to be drafted, so can we review it before we sign it? Right, or no?
We can do that.
No, I just would send an notice of the approval of Council, pardon me, Council President, on this motion, if it's approved, to the departments involved, as was suggested.
Any further questions or comments? There's a motion on the floor? All those in favor, please say aye.
President?
No.
Any opposed? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Aye, let's go for it.
Council Vice President?
Yes.
Council Ortiz?
President?
Noted. Council Abdu?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Depeña?
No.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
And Council President? Motion fails. Four in favor, one against, two, one present, one abstain.
Councillors, is there a motion to table? Any further motion?
Motion to table?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on with the agenda, we have all business, document 31317, International Energy Conservation Stretch Code, request to affirm the approval on 10/24/17, for the effective date on 11/24/17. Placed on the agenda by Teresa Park, our planning director. Good evening, Director.
I believe this is my third appearance regarding this item, so I do believe that the councillors are pretty well versed in this item. This is a follow-up to our last meeting, talking about the Green Communities Act and the destination that the city is seeking. So at the last meeting, it was made very clear that the city was adopting the current stretch code, and there was much discussion about that, but what you didn't have in front of you was the actual ordinance language reiterating that. So as a housekeeping item, this is to ask you to reaffirm that you were in fact intending to adopt the current stretch code, and not what the original proposed ordinance stated, which was the 2009 stretch code.
So, I'm sorry.
Councillor LaPlante?
So what would you recommend the motion be?
To affirm the vote adopting the current stretch code as stated in the Massachusetts Board of Building Regulations and Standards.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any further discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director. Councillors, are there any table matters that you wish to take off the table at this point?
Ooh, I guess I can take something off the table.
Councillor LaPlante?
Yeah, I'm going to find it now. Just plenty to choose from, says the clerk. I've got a full house. Where's the Rivera one?
In the meantime, just to do some housecleaning, I know Councilor Reyes presented two resolutions to InteRroveo and Edwin InteRroveo. Councilor Reyes, will you mind withdrawing those documents from the agenda?
Yes, please.
So documents 33517 and 33617, can I get a motion to take off the table?
So move. Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Is there a motion to withdraw?
Motion to withdraw?
Is there a second? Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussions? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 26317, can I please get a motion to take it off the table and withdraw?
So move. Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Document 14717 is handicap parking at 280 Broadway, Elizabeth Rivera Perez. Councillors, if you recall, no action by the city council was necessary for this particular item a while back. Can I please get a motion to withdraw, take off the table and withdraw?
Take it off the table?
So move.
So motion to take it off the table and withdraw has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Councillors, any further documents?
Take document 39514 off the table and withdraw.
39514, motion has been made-
Second.
And properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Councillors, any further documents?
Council President, 33715, that was put on by you.
Sorry, where were we? 337?
15. That was put on by you.
Uh, no, that's, I'll prefer to keep that there.
Okay.
Uh, look at Document 25816. It's, um...
21616, yes.
Yeah, handicap parking 48 Warren Street, did we fix, did we do anything with that?
Yeah, can we take it out of the table, mothers?
Motion has been made.
Second.
And properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Counsel Rodriguez?
Second.
Motion has been made to withdraw. All those in favor, please say aye. 21616.
Aye.
Counselors, we have another document, Document 35816. It's the Children and Family Embraces of Lawrence, Request Permission for a 5K Road Race on November 6, 2016. Can I please get a motion to take it off the table and withdraw?
So move. Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Uh, 244, motion has been made to take it off the table and withdraw.
Second.
Motion to withdraw?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. 24416.
Do we wanna touch anything, 2715, 2815, 2915?
That's up to the City Council, to each Counselor. Is there a motion on the floor?
Second.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor to take off the table and withdraw, please say aye.
Aye.
2715, 2815.
15 and 29.
2915. That was taken as a block, Counsel Ortiz?
As a block, please.
So Documents 27, 28, and 2915 were taken as a block to take off the table and withdraw. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. How about Counsel 24, 25, and 20... 24, 25, 26, and 30, 15?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to take it off the table and withdraw. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Did we touch 187 yet, or is that still on? Whatever, should keep that on.
What?
187, the double poles.
187 still there?
Still on?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's stayed.
Uh, 211, Counsel President?
Uh, 211?
Yep.
Motion has been made.
Oh, what's going on with that?
Lawrence Superior Court, Request the Assistance of the Lawrence, the City of Lawrence Regarding Vehicle Parking in Front of the Courthouse on Common Street. I remember this.
Yeah, I remember this too.
The judge passed away.
He did?
And we resolved this issue, yeah.
Yeah, I believe so.
Judge Conera passed away, yeah. So is there a motion to take it off the table and withdraw?
Motion to take it off the table.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Counsel President, 38816?
38816, motion has been made and properly, is there a second?
Oh, no, they want that.
No. We have to create a different document, because they already have one handicap parking in front of the building.
So it's something different?
Yeah, it's something different. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So Document 38816, motion to...
Withdraw.
Take it off the table and withdraw has been made.
Second.
Has been properly second. Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Do we recall if the disclosure for Linda Smith was approved?
They request to withdraw.
Okay, so motion, according to the clerk, we request to withdraw was made. Is there a motion to take it off the table and withdraw?
Withdraw?
Uh, 2117, It's Disclosure by Municipal Employee, Linda Smith.
Uh, so move.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussions? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Counselors, any further documents?
No business.
Did we do 371?
Which one?
Sure.
371?
371? Document 37116, is there a motion?
Um, so moved.
Second.
Second, to take it off the table and withdraw has been made. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Counselors, I have Document 38314 on the top. Motion, can I please get a motion to take it off the table and withdraw?
38314.
38314.
38314.
That was placed on the agenda by myself.
To withdraw?
To take off the table and withdraw?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Counsel LaPlante, 148?
Which one?
14811.
148?
11.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I don't know if Mayor Maxi has been completely resolved yet.
It's still ongoing, because the construction project that's on there, it's just, it's a night, it's kind of a headache nightmare. At some point, it'll need to be dealt with.
It's been six years.
And the project's still ongoing.
The project's still ongoing. They're changing the, every time I drive by, I see something new.
It's something different.
So we have a taxi cab medallion transfer, Document 10416. It's been here for over a year and a half.
Do we have an update on it?
Counsel Reyes?
Counsel Reyes?
What is it?
Counsel Reyes, Document 10416. It's a taxi cab medallion. It's a request to be transferred from Julio Diaz to Dario Nunez.
Motion to withdraw.
Motion to take it off the table and withdraw?
Uh, so move.
Okay, motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Counsel President, do you wanna speak on about 19714?
19714?
Can we request some type of a, uh...
Update.
An update or something?
Okay, so is there a motion to take it off the table?
Motion to take it off the table.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, Counselors, can I please get a motion to send correspondence to National Department of Public Safety in reference to the double poles throughout the city and provide an update for our next City Council session?
So move.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Motion to table.
Uh, any oppose? The ayes have it. Motion to table has been made.
Second.
And it's been properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
38314, Counsel President, do you wanna do anything with that? Withdraw?
We withdrew it already.
We did.
We did that one.
Yeah, we did it.
Okay. So Counselors, just if you, if you, to ensure that the City Clerk and our assistant City Clerk have the information, I'm just gonna go through everything that I have as a withdrawal, just to make sure that we all agree on it. So I have, I'm gonna start from the top. 38314.
Yep.
394, 39514, 2415, 2515, 2615, 2715, 2815, 2915, 3015, 2115. 10416, 21616, 24416, 35816, 37116, 38816, 2117, 14717, 26317, 33517, 33617.
6615. I also did that. That was the last one we did.
No, the, uh, we did 10416. So let's, motion to take Document 6615 off the table and withdraw?
Oh, discussion?
Discussion?
Yeah.
Is there a motion first?
So move.
Uh, motion has been made and properly second. Discussion, Counsel Ortiz?
So is this, just a little bit of background, so this says Taxi Livery Tenants of Building With Delinquent, Property Taxes Betterments. Was this the proposed ordinance to not give taxi companies licenses or medallions or something, based on the possibility of the building that they were in having property, outstanding property taxes?
That is correct.
That is correct.
And what, why is it tabled, or where's, where does the, where does the council sit on this?
The council as a body decided to table, me personally, as a Counselor.
I need clarification.
I don't know how the other Counselors feel. Me personally, I would vote opposed to this, simply because a lot of the taxi and liberty are tenants of...
Are tenants of the building, so they don't have, that's where I stand in this as well.
Yes, so what, what I have discussed with the assessors and the tax collector is that they do have the opportunity to engage in a payment. So instead of paying the rental for the location where they are, they could have access to pay the taxes of the, of the property. But that's something between the tenant and the landlord. The city will not be able to engage in their arrangement of payment.
All right, that would be a whole other discussion. I'm not gonna...
Big discussion.
Because that doesn't...
I know.
Why would my tenant pay my taxes when they have other deficios?
But you will, yeah, you will not be paying the rent. You will pay the taxes in lieu of tax, in lieu of rent.
But that benefits everybody else that's in the building as well.
That is correct. So that's why I don't, I don't support this measure.
Yeah, okay.
Because I, I think it's unfair to tenants.
Right.
Overall. That's my particular take. But I think that this could be a very lengthy conversation.
Conversation.
Yeah. So unless there's any questions, if you would like to re-table?
Um...
A withdrawal? It's up to, whatever the council decides.
It's that public hearing, so it's gonna make an impact.
So the public hearing was open and closed?
And the, I'm sorry to say that?
The public hearing was previously open and closed.
Right.
So it is my, the likelihood is that there's a motion on the floor right now as we're, as we speak.
Right, and what's the motion?
Uh, do we have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
No, it was table pending, there was a motion to table, there was no motion presented, it was motion to table.
Okay, so no more, there's no motion on the original discussion. So it's up to the council at this level to decide.
What do you want?
What you would like to do, based on the information you have.
And based on that information, and we have no further information from the tax department or assessors on how...
I don't have, I don't have it with me. If I go, if you give me one second, I could probably find some stuff. I will, if you give me a few minutes, I'll find some stuff.
No, that's okay. So my intent, thank you so much, Counsel President, through you. So my intent in questioning it is that we have moved and made strides to bring people responsible for owing taxes to pay for their property taxes. I think that the way that it stands, I guess, is not going to mitigate that issue, having a tenant pay taxes, because the tenant is only responsible for the square footage in which they rent. And so would we then, I, according to what you're saying to me, this isn't written in a way, at the moment, to fix the problem, like Counselor Plant said earlier on the common vote. What are we fixing here? What are we actually doing?
I don't think so. I don't think we're fixing anything.
Right. So we can, I'll make a motion to withdraw.
Motion has been made.
Second.
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
What motion?
I have a motion already.
So the motion to table?
Motion to table.
It's supersede.
Supersede.
Yeah, so motion to table, is there a second?
Should've discussed it, and, all right.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, to table, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Motion, the document has been re-table. Counselors, if there's no further documents that you wish to take off the table?
Let's move on.
I'm moving on to, uh, New Business. We have Document 35317. I have a, is there anyone in the audience that is here for any particular document? Were you here for any particular document, sir? 36817.
Oh, but that's the business.
Those documents will be referred to the Ordinance Committee. We will not be discussing them tonight. We apologize for keeping you waiting.
I'll try to send it to you.
Okay, not a problem. So Document 35317, Sepfiscreye 2018 Property Tax Classification Hearings, placed on the agenda by the Board of the Assessors, is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. 35317.
Um, yes, the Budget and Finance, I mean, the Board of Assessors asked that it be in order for a public hearing prior to recall.
Okay.
If the council would consider.
Counselors, if you recall, let me see if I could find an email. Every year, when we're doing the tax classification, in order to move along with the process, we have assisted Assessor Vega in ordering a public hearing the same night that we've referred the document for the Budget and Finance Committee, to ensure that we follow the calendar, the very strict calendar that he has, in terms of getting the tax bill on time before the next quarter. So can I please, I'm trying to find his email. Do you have the date, Mr. Clerk?
I just remember the email conversation in general.
Mr. President, I believe that the tentative schedule was for the 29th.
For the 29th?
So Wednesday night. That's my interaction with him by text.
By text, okay.
I believe that's true with the email.
Sure, if that's the date that we have, can I please get a motion to also order the public hearing for the, for Wednesday, the 29th?
I have one question, Mr. President. I know we're gonna be strapped from members that evening.
I know that it was on the first week in December.
Um, 29th is what we, as, because we have a meeting on the 5th. I'm sorry.
So the date that you're talking about is for the tax bill to go out, no?
No.
I'm talking about the Budget and Finance Committee meeting.
Oh, your next Budget and Finance.
Correct. I think this is going to, this is going to that, we're gonna put it for the next Budget and Finance Committee meeting, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So I just wanna make sure that the 29th is when Mr. Vega can arrive. I just wanna make sure that we will have quorum.
Yes.
Now that one member who's not here right now will not be able to be there. So I need to confirm, Mr. Peña and yourself, that you'll both be here for the 29th.
Yes, I will be here.
Okay, we're good then.
Okay, so can I, at the same time, can I please get a motion to order a public hearing for December 5th?
So move. Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it. Counselors, I skipped three documents by, Document 3517, Sina Auto Fair and Auto Show, Request the Use of the Campania and Common for an auto fair and a commercial auto show on May 26 and 27, 2018. I love these people. They are way ahead of their game. Counsel LaPlante, how do you feel about their request?
It's good.
The auto show?
They're, well, not the show, but the fact that they're here six months ahead.
Six months ahead.
We should give them a resolution.
I think that's a first.
It's not a typo? It wasn't 17?
Is there a typo, Mr. Clerk?
I, I, I didn't redo it.
All right, wonderful. This, this is great. All those in favor, please say, uh, uh, going to the Ordinance Committee.
Okay.
Going to the Ordinance Committee.
Yes.
Document 35117, Stop Sign, is going to the Ordinance Committee. Document 35217, Handicap Parking, Ordinance Committee. Document 35417, Handicap Parking, Ordinance Committee. Document 355, 56, 57, 58, 59, 360, 361, 362, 363, 364, 365, are all mobileite small cell utility, and they're requesting to place antennas in different locations, including Maple Street and Lawrence Street, Shakerin Road, and Salem Chandler and Medford, Hancock and Leonard, Haverhill Street and Union, Lexington and Lawrence, Newbury and Common, Prospect and General, Hampshire and Common, Vermont and Auburn, Truman and Broadway. It's going down to, are all going down to the Ordinance Committee. Document 36617, Stop Sign, Ordinance Committee. Document 36717, Stop Sign, Ordinance Committee. Documents 36817, 36917, 37017, 37117, 37217, 37317. New Singular Wireless PSS and AT&amp;T are looking to place antenna at the following locations, 6810, One General Street, One Patton Street, 82 Sunset Ave, 48 Cross Street, 269 Jackson Street, all going to the Ordinance Committee. Document 37417, Disclosure of Municipal Employee of Financial Interest Contract, Front Marketing, from the Fire Department, is going to the Ordinance Committee, no parking. Ordinance Committee, 37617, no parking. Ordinance Committee, Document 37717, Stop Sign, Ordinance Committee. Document 37817, Lawrence Police Department, 2017 Support and Incentive Grant, on the amount of $243,636, is going to Budget and Finance Committee. Document 37917, no parking, is going to the Ordinance Committee. Document 38617, Office of Planning and Development, grant, the Mass Alliance on Teen Pregnancy Incorporated Grant, on the amount of $49,950, is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document
Document 38717, Office of Planning and Development, Mass Emotion Grant, $150,000 is going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document 38817, Office of Planning and Development, Emergency Solution Grant on the amount of $136,695. It's going to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document 36917, Speed Limit, Ordinance Committee. 39117, Speed Limit, Ordinance Committee. 39117, Stop Sign, Ordinance Committee. 39217, Speed Limit, Ordinance Committee.
Mister Chair from the Personnel Committee. Counselors, before we move on, there's one document that, um, uh, I'm gonna take the blame on this because I was really sick and I didn't follow up in an email, uh, trail that was happening, and I wasn't able to respond to the clerk on time, or to, um, Personal Director Frank Bonnet. And as a result, I didn't, uh, request this item to be placed on the agenda. So, can I please get a motion to suspend Rule 11 and add a new document to the agenda? We will not be voting on it as an emergency, it's just to place it on the agenda to be referred to the subcommittee. The document is Capital Asset Project Manager for the Department of Public Works, and it's a job classification. Um, the request is by Frank Bonnet, our personal director. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to suspend the rule?
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Uh, this document is, I'm sorry? So, it's, the new document is document 39417.
Ordinance. Ordinance? Ordinance. Ordinance.
Uh, it's also going to the Ordinance Committee. Mister Chair from the Housing Committee.
Uh, no business.
No business. Mister Chair, Madame Vice Chair from the Personnel Committee.
Is 39417 coming to us?
No.
No.
Madame Chair from the Ordinance.
So, next Thursday, what date is next Thursday?
Thursday...
The 30th, is it?
30.
Thursday, the 30th? Okay?
Seven o'clock.
Yeah, I won't be here.
Don't know. Okay. We're just gonna leave it open because Counselor Rodriguez is not gonna be available, and I have to check with Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez, otherwise, I have no power, so tentatively, we're just gonna leave it for November 30. If it's something changed, we're gonna let you know, or you can contact, please, Counselor Alvarez, and confirm that she's gonna be present before you start making phone calls for people to come.
Okay.
Okay?
If Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez or Counselor Madonado are available, I'll make myself available.
Unless you wanna do it on Wednesday, the 29th?
Counselor Madonado come back Saturday.
This is Saturday?
So, he probably will.
Yes, Saturday.
Okay.
He told me today.
Alright, so...
So, if he may become available.
So, let's schedule it for Thursday. If we need to cancel, we'll, we'll reschedule.
Next Thursday, yeah.
We have until Tuesday, yeah.
Yeah.
So, let's go ahead. Um, Mister Chair from Budget and Finance.
Yeah, we're gonna have that meet on the 29th.
The 29th?
29th?
Yep.
29th, Wednesday, yes, sir.
What time?
7:00 PM.
Okay, Counselors, I wish each and every one of you a very happy Thanksgiving, and to all Lawrence residents, please enjoy yourself with your families and loved ones. Happy Thanki- Thanksgiving to all. Uh, I, I did, uh, I would like to, once again, highlight, we had Counselor-elect Abel Payano, Counselor-elect Anna Levy, and Counselor-elect, um, Maria de la Cruz, uh, in the audience tonight. Thank you for joining us.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion has been made.
Second.
And it's been properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.